Good evening, welcome everyone. Please stand for the pledge and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have Naomi Lerman here from the Fountain Hills Interfaith Alliance. Naomi?
Thank you for the opportunity to represent the Fountain Hills Interfaith Alliance. I am one of the Jewish members of the alliance and I'll be reading a prayer from the Reform Movement of Judaism Prayer Book. It's titled in Hebrew, "Modim Anach Nulach", which means, "We stand before you." For the expanding grandeur of creation, worlds known and unknown, galaxies beyond galaxies, filling us with awe and challenging our imaginations, modim anach nulach, we stand before you. For this fragile planet Earth, its times and tides, its sunsets and seasons, modim anach nulach, we stand before you. For the joy of human life, its wonders and surprises, its hopes and achievements, modim anach nulach, we stand before you. For human community, our common past and future hope, our oneness transcending all separation, our capacity to work for peace and justice in the midst of hostility and oppression, modim anach nulach, we stand before you. For high hopes and noble causes, for faith without fanaticism, for understanding of views not shared, modim anach nulach, we stand before you. For all who have labored and suffered for a fairer world, who have lived so that others might live in dignity and freedom, modim anach nulach, we stand before you. For human liberties and sacred rights, for opportunities to change and grow, to affirm and choose, modim anach nulach, we stand before you. We pray that we may live not by our fears, but by our hopes, not by our words, but by our deeds. Baruch atah anunai, hatov shemcha b'lecha noeh lehodot. Blessed are you, are deni, your name and goodness, and you are worthy of praise.
Thank you, Naomi. We'll start with a roll call. Councilman Magazine is absent.
Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor LaCron.
Present.
Councilmember Charnow.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Councilmember Spelitch.
Present.
Thank you. I was asked to remind everyone to please speak into your microphones. We, some folks were having trouble hearing us at our last meeting. The first item is our reports by the mayor, councilmembers, and town manager. Grady, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
I know Mike, he probably has something to say, right?
A couple of things, Mayor. Thank you. First one, last week there was a Valley Metro Board Meeting that I attended and, of course, the big talk at that was the passage of Prop 105 in the city of Phoenix, which if voted in favor would have pretty much killed light rail as we know it. So it got pretty soundly defeated, so everyone was pretty happy about that and that'll allow extensions to continue within Phoenix for the light rail. We also approved a package for, they're calling them commuter coaches, and so we have an express bus that comes to town here, you know, twice in the morning, then comes back in the afternoon. So over the next five years, they're gonna be replacing all of the express buses with these coaches and a $36 million contract. And they're basically motor coaches. They're like big, nice greyhounds that people will be able to commute into the valley on. They still have 50 seats and they'll have overhead lighting and individual AC controls, so, and they're even a little bit cheaper than what the buses are now. So sounded good for that, so hopefully we get one of those pretty soon out here. And then lastly, we announced several months ago, Valley Metro is updating a transit plan study for Fountain Hills at no cost, no expenses on our part. But it was supposed to be done this summer. It's been delayed a little bit, but hopefully in the next month or two we'll be getting a draft of that and be able to go over that. So, and then the mayor, myself, town manager Grady, and Liz, the town clerk, we were all at the Arizona League of Conference Cities and Towns in Tucson. Was it two weeks ago? It seemed like a long time ago already. But went to five different workshops there and obviously they have different lunches and a lot of different speakers. So found it very, very informative and educational. Glad I went. And, you know, probably the best workshop I went to was talking about preemption and how a lot of state legislatures around the country are passing rules and laws that kind of restrict local entities from enacting or doing certain things. So thought that was kind of relevant to some of the things we've been dealing with lately, so just thought that was very informative. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any activities they'd like to report on? We really had a good session, I think. You know, I've been to a lot of those leagues conferences and the, it's one of the rare times where I was looking at the times and I couldn't decide which one to go to. There were a lot that were really good. But on, if you go to the league website, they actually videotaped a lot of the presentations and the PowerPoints and everything are there. So if you want to go, it's a weird, it's, it's not the usual on azleague.org, but if you go to the, Joe's put in Arizona League of Cities and Towns, it'll say presentations and have photos and all those kind of things. In addition to all the sessions, we had a chance to sit down with SRP, our utilities, Republic Services, other cities that are going through some of the things that we are, Goodyear, Youngtown, talking about, a little bit about homelessness, and of course Scottsdale, Sedona, Flagstaff, all with the short-term rental kind of stuff. Jack Lunsford was there, who's the man that we had hired to help us with FAA stuff, and he was there on some other items. So it was good to know that he was, had his ear and voice there. Very worthwhile. Hopefully maybe we can get the whole crew to go next time because I think it's always, it's always amazing what you actually learn and you don't, you don't know it before you go and then once you get there, you're like, wow, it was really worthwhile. We met with Jeep Greater Phoenix Economic Council. They came here, had a good meeting with them and with James. We had a party for Heather Ware, who retired after 14 years here in town with us. You know, Heather's always really great at inspiring people to give of their most precious possession, which a lot of time is their time. So we thank her, we wish her luck. I think she just became a grandma yesterday, so good for her. And then I went to the MAG Regional Council Meeting, Maricopa Association of Governments. So we, we think it's summer, but we're busy. I wanted to just really quickly, as quickly as much I can summarize, which are the resolutions that were passed by the League of Cities and Towns. I get to be on that Resolutions Committee, which is a privilege. And the league had sent us all the items that they were looking at, that they wanted to, that they'll be advocating for in the legislature. One had to do with property tax and salvage property valuations. Another had to do with allowing governing bodies to use newspapers printed in the county. Mike had asked me a little bit about that. And these all passed, by the way. We had a wastewater fairness act, the supporting legislation for Arizona to ratify the Equal Rights Amendment. There was one about being able to have executive sessions about emergency response, very apropos. Oh, and more about short-term rentals. So there'll be more coming out on that. That one was brought forth by Sedona. And then support for appropriations to the Heritage Fund, which of course funds our state park. So we'll keep our eyes open when the legislature gets back in session. I think our legislators are gonna be here, I think, October or next month. So, yeah, next month. So we'll be able to kind of let them know what the league has in mind and hopefully we'll get some success there. Now, anything else? Anybody else? We have our proclamation next, which, is Kara here by any chance? We had, I had a request on behalf of her dad. She shared her father's story with us about his struggles with prostate cancer and it's our town's privilege to proclaim the month of September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Hopefully, she was gonna come. If she makes it later, I'll be able to give this to her, but I'll read it, which is, whereas each year approximately 174,650 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone every year, roughly 31,600 die from this disease, which is 87 men every day. And whereas in Arizona, an estimated 2,800 new cases of prostate cancer will be, estimated 900 deaths in 2019. Whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer, second-leading cause behind lung and colon cancer. Whereas men with relatives, father, brother, or son with a history of prostate cancer are twice as likely to develop the disease. Whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and serving and protecting our families. Whereas all men are at risk and we encourage the citizens of the town to increase the importance of prostate screenings. I therefore, Jenny Dickey, Mayor, hereby proclaim September 2019 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. I encourage all citizens, government agencies, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and other groups to join in activities that will increase awareness and prevention of prostate cancer. If this young lady comes, we'll give this to her. Otherwise, we'll make sure that she gets it. Thank you. Next, we have our scheduled public appearances and presentation. I believe you just have one.
Yes. Mayor and council, before you tonight, Captain Larry Kratzler will be giving a presentation. As you're aware, he typically does a monthly update. This particular monthly update, because we've had some questions and concerns expressed about crime and crime stats, he's going to actually focus more on that for tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Captain Kratzler.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, good to be back. It's been a while since we've had the presentation, so.
That's the rules.
That's not mine. There it is.
Hiding on ya.
Okay. So we've had a, as you all know, we've had a few high-profile incidents in Fountain Hills, a couple of situations where homicide detectives had to come out. And there's been a lot of talk about the crime statistics here in Fountain Hills and, you know, if crimes are going, crime stats are going up, if it's trending upward or downward. We thought it was important to present to the town council and the members of the public some crime stats to kind of show residents what it looks like in terms of real data. So, so we're not guessing. We're gonna actually take a look at what those crime stats are. We're gonna look at both property crimes and we're gonna look at person crimes. So this is gonna be a five-year crime report and I worked with our crime analysis unit down in Phoenix. One analyst in particular helped pull a lot of this data. So we'll go through this slideshow. It's not very long, but I wanted to hit each slide and comment on a few of the slides here. Okay, so some of the topics we'll hit on just briefly on this will be staffing levels, not super pertinent to the crime levels, but policing activity and then the uniform crime report. Here's a disclaimer. This is basically just saying that 2018 uniform crime reporting stats have not been reported yet to the FBI and published. So a lot of the crime stats that were pulled from our analysts were pulled from their websites or their databases. So this information for 2018 for other cities, we're gonna compare some other cities here to Fountain Hills. It's not the official information from the FBI, but they're pretty close. It's just saying these are not exact numbers. I'm hitting on staffing briefly. This is just a breakdown, a pie chart of how the staffing in Fountain Hills District 7 is broken down. One captain, one lieutenant, seven sergeants, three detectives, 22 patrol deputies, and admin assistant. And it just gives the breakdown of what percentage that makes up of the staffing. Okay, so the first slide is from 2014 to 2018. This is the total call source type. So we have a couple of different types of call source types. We have the calls for service. That's when somebody from the public makes a call, whether it's 911 or a non-emergency number, and they call in, obviously a call for service. They need the sheriff's office for something. And then the other category is on view. That's a deputy-initiated activity. So the green is the calls for service and the blue is the on-view traffic. The green is what we're kind of looking at. The on-view is just something that was thrown in there. You can see the activity, deputy on-view activity. But if we look at the green, the calls for service, you can see the calls for service over the last five years there. 2014, we had 4,500, just 4,600 calls for service. 2015, 5,438 calls for service, up just slightly. In 2016, 5,462, another slight increase. In 2017, a 5,845. And then 2018, 6,290 calls for service. 2018's calls for service increased 37% since 2014. And as of right now, the calls for service in 2019 are projected at 6,664 calls for service. So that continues to trend upward in terms of the number of people that are calling in CSO. And that could be for any, anything. It could be for a crime. It could be for a motorist assist. Could be for a vacation watch. It's just the overall calls for service. This is the calls for service broken down and the on-view activity broken down for 2019 from January to July 31st. And it breaks down by month here. If you look at the months, again, looking at the green, which is the calls for service, that's where we're gonna focus on. You can kind of see how the calls for service since January till July, there's not too much of a deviation in there. It ranges from 462 calls for service in January. The high point was 585 calls for service in May. Total calls for service from January 1st, 2019, through July 31st, 2019 was 3,676 calls. Gauging that with prior years, it's currently 58% of 2018's total calls for service and then 66% of the average calls from 2014 to 2018. So yes, calls for service are increasing. But again, that includes motorist assists, civil standbys, anything like that. It also does include any other crime, though, if there was a report of an assault or burglary or theft. This next slide breaks down the total number of reports by month from, by year, I'm sorry, by year. And so you may know, but every call for service that a deputy has does not result in a report being taken. If there's a report of a crime, a deputy will absolutely take a report. We also take reports on other things, sick or injured persons that get transported by a fire department. Suspicious activity that we want documented. But you can see here, year to year, for the most part, with the exception of 2016, there's been an increase in the number of reports taken per year by deputies, with 2018 having 1,407, which was just up slightly from 2017. The total reports as of right now, or the total reports have increased 13% since 2013 and they are typically increasing yearly. Now, this is a breakdown of the same reports that are for 2019 from January to July 31st. When you look at this, so it breaks it down by month, you can see that May had a normal, a normally high amount of reports that were taken by deputies. Part of that is the, May was the month that we experienced the rash of vehicle burglaries, stolen vehicles, that crime trend that happened for about a week and a half in Fountain Hills. After that, it kind of levels back out and it's back to about the average, normal range. Total reports from January 1st, 2019 through July 31st is 885 reports and that's currently 63% of 2018's total. So it's currently increased from last year's total at this point in time. And it's 73% of the average of 2014 through 18 total percent. So there is an increase in the total number of reports being taken. If anyone has any questions also at any time, you can feel free to stop me, otherwise we can talk about it at the end. Because May was substantially higher, we broke down May individually to look at what consisted of all those reports. And as you can see, there were, in May, there were 16 theft reports, 15 burglaries from vehicles, 12 criminal damage reports, 11 vehicle crash with no injury. And then it goes on after that. But the big thing is the theft and then the burglary from vehicle and the criminal damage. Some of those smash and grabs were coded as criminal damage reports if nothing was taken but a window was broken. Of the top 10 report types in May 2019, burglary from vehicles and stolen vehicle reports were higher in May than previous years, 2014 through 18. The further analysis showed a crime spree occurred on May 3rd, 2019, where seven burglaries from vehicle reports and one stolen vehicle report occurred. Of the remaining six stolen vehicle reports, three were recoveries from other agencies, where a stolen vehicle was left in the town, and two were vehicles that were left unlocked with keys in the vehicle and the final one resulted in an arrest of the subject. This is again, looking at the May 3rd burglaries that we had here. You could see the hotspots where those occurred. It was Suoro and Trevino, I'm sorry, Suoro and Shea, that area there, right off the Beeline Highway. Easy, quick access for somebody to go in there, look through vehicles and make a quick exit if anybody came up. This slide here is just looking at the top 10 calls for service from 2017 to 2019. And all 10 of these top calls for service are consistent throughout each of the last three years. We'll just look at 2019 right now, but you can see the comparison. Welfare checks was our top call for service and that's anytime if someone may call in saying either something looks suspicious or can you check on my neighbor for me? I haven't seen or heard from him in a couple of days. We had 502 of those so far this year in 2019. False burglar alarms, 410 of those. That was our second highest call for service. Citizen motorist assists, 180 of those. 131 suspicious activities. And I know when we talked about welfare check, it depends on how the deputy clears the call because some of those suspicious activity calls that come in, a deputy at the end of it may close it out a welfare check if there was nothing that seemed out of the ordinary. And then so on, audible alarm, burglar alarm, vehicle crash with no injuries, suspicious persons, civil action, a traffic hazard, and then follow-up. And follow-up is simply if a deputy took a report and had to go and conduct further investigation, they would go out on dispatch to, so dispatch knew what they were doing. Okay, now we'll get into the part that this was all about. So the uniform crime report estimates. And so what this does, it looks at the last five years and it gives us the total, we broke it down by each year, so the population is listed there for Fountain Hills for each year from 2014 on. Where in 2014, we had 23,153 residents and 2019, we're now showing 24,987. Breaks it down each year by burglary, theft, auto theft, and arson. So those are our property crimes. If you look at 2018, we had 260 total property crimes in Fountain Hills, which was up from the prior year of 2017 of 249. Prior to that, 2016, there was 194 total property crimes. So you can see an increase there in property crimes. If we look at 2019, the total number of property crimes were currently at 183. Where we broke this down for the crime index was per 1,000 persons. What was that, what was that number? So 2017, there was 10.1 property crimes per 1,000 persons in Fountain Hills. 2018, there was 10.4 property crimes per 1,000 residents. And currently in 2019, what that percentage would be or what that number would be if this, if these numbers continue on pace would be 7.3 property crimes per person, total property crimes for 1,000 persons. So, and again, that's just guessed, that's if for 2019 to date, if it were to stay on track. Down below there are the violent crime totals. So we're talking about homicides, sexual assaults, robberies, aggravated assaults. And what we show that was in 2018, there were 33 total. So when you break that down, four homicides, 14 sexual assaults, three robberies, 12 aggravated assaults. Total number of violent crimes in 2018 was 33, which was 1.3 violent crimes per 1,000 people. Now, I'll put this in comparison on the next slide with other cities to kind of see how we average. You can see the years prior, it was in 2017, .8 violent crimes per 1,000 people and that was the same for the prior four years. So 2018 was up from point, 0.8 from the last four years, three years, I'm sorry, till 2018. Currently in 2019, total violent crimes were at .6. So the year's not over yet, but that's where we currently stand. Okay, so this was kind of a tedious task for analysts to pick some cities to compare. We didn't want to do it just by population because there's not too many cities that are the same population as Fountain Hills. We just wanted kind of a variety to look at. So we looked at Buckeye, Apache Junction, Scottsdale, Chandler, Gilbert, El Mirage, and we compared each of those to Fountain Hills. Obviously, out of all the ones we compared, Fountain Hills has the lowest of the populations with the next closest one being El Mirage at 35,000. But when we start looking at the numbers, we looked at, this one is the property crimes. So burglary, theft, auto theft, arson. The number that's important is the property crimes per 1,000 persons. And if you look Fountain Hills, out of those six cities, and this wasn't picked just so we could be the lowest of the six, we picked six cities that the analysts could easily obtain their crime reporting data. Fountain Hills came in at 10.4 property crimes per 1,000 people. The next closest to that was Gilbert at 17.3 property crimes per 1,000 people. After that was Buckeye with 18.1 and then Apache Junction, 20.2 property crimes for 1,000. Then you had Scottsdale and Chandler, both around 23.3 and 23.5 property crimes for 1,000 people. Highest being El Mirage of the ones that we compared at 26.5. So that's a pretty substantial gap there between Fountain Hills and the next lowest of these six cities we compared, at 10.4 to the next lowest of 17.3 property crimes per 1,000 people. Now, we're gonna look at the violent crime comparison. So this looks at homicides, sexual assault, robbery, aggravated assault. And again, this is compared to these same six cities. The total number, we'll just break it down by that. Fountain Hills came in at the second lowest number of violent crimes for 1,000 persons. We were at 1.3. The only one lower out of the six were Gilbert and they were at 0.9. After that, the next lowest is Scottsdale and Buckeye at 1.7, El Mirage at 2.2, and Apache Junction at 3.6. So I think it's pretty clear, I think it's clear that compared to these six cities, and we could have done it to more cities, it just would have taken a lot more time and data mining. But I think it's safe to say, just looking at a snippet of cities from East and West Valley, that Fountain Hills... that Fountain Hills remains constantly low in both property crimes and violent crimes per one thousand people. So that was the end of the slideshow and the, the stats. Were, were there any questions by any members of the council, or, um, if I can clarify any of the data, I will. But again, our analysts did that, so it might be limited in my knowledge.
Thank you. Any questions?
Larry, I, I think this is very interesting, and unfortunately, this was not in our packet. Um, I'd like very much if you can work with us, and we'll make sure that we put this out on our website.
Yes, definitely. I'll get that to you for that. And just due to time, I'm going to let that be the presentation, and on the next month, I'll give you a little bit more of, uh, current events in the town. So, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to mention that, um, we, the law enforcement of speeding and your presence has really picked up, um, in the last month or so. I wanted to thank you for that. We appreciate that increased, um, presence for sure. Larry's also working on some other things that people have asked us about, including the role of ring doorbells, uh, and crime prevention. I also know that we were talking a little bit about pedestrian safety, and, and you probably know this, but in the meantime, a few days ago, the red light running hit, deaths hit a ten-year high, and the state of Arizona is the worst in that. So, um, and I, I know that we're taking really good steps towards that, and we're, we're not going to get to it when we talk about streets, but some of the line of sight issues are also going to be addressed. And, um, I, I, as a pedestrian, I feel like, oh, I've seen a lot more presence and a lot more activity go to try and, uh, reverse that because Arizona, and I think Arizona's been pretty much the worst for a while, but this was just from AAA. So we appreciate that extra attention. I also want to mention, since we're talking about statistics, um, we had some slides at a meeting, probably during our budget. But Fountain Hills not only comes out, um, low as far as crime per capita, but our law enforcement costs per capita to get the services that we've been getting are very much the lowest of about twenty different cities. Um, and, and there's a mixture there of cities that use MCSO, but a lot of them that have their own, or they, um, uh, like Paradise Valley. So just for a quick example, the West Valley average is three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, um, per capita, and, um, Fountain Hills is one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And in the East Valley, it's three hundred and sixty-one dollars, and of course Fountain Hills is a hundred and eighty-seven. So we're not even, Paradise Valley is six hundred and forty-four dollars cost per capita for the law enforcement there. So I think that, um, facts are good things, numbers are good things, and I appreciate the, uh, uh, forthright way that MCSO has responded to probably a lot of requests and questions coming, um, from us. And we look forward to hearing more from you and from the Sheriff's Department in the next few months. Does anybody have any questions, given any further information? No?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spelitch, I'll, I just want to let you know, I'll get back to you too on the ring, um, thing. There's some more things that have come up in conversation, so, um, I'll, I'll have a report next month on that just to make sure we follow up with the question you asked, and, um, thank you for that.
Thank you. I'm going to, um, please allow me to introduce the family of Russell Fock is here. I believe they got here late, so I'm going to come down, and I won't read it again, but I'll present this to you. And if you'd like, I think we could probably get a photo, but we really appreciate you sharing your dad's story with us. Thank you. Next is our call to the public. Do we have any cards? Thank you. Uh, the first one is Harris Deech. Mr. Deech?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to announce my candidacy for the US House, House Representatives on a protecting. I want to protect everybody in here. I know exactly how to do it. So, uh, I'm having a meeting on October third, mass shootings in the Fountain Hills High School, seven PM. I suggest you go with it because they asked the governor in five times.
I'm sorry? Oh, you need to talk in the microphone, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I have a loud voice anyway. I did have a few questions for lieutenant, or captain, rather, but, um, he didn't ask me, so...
When we have things like this, we can't have back and forth, but, you know, you can obviously, uh, email him or let me know, and we can give you his contact information.
I want to know what's he doing about mass shootings. They're all over the country, all over the schools. And why is this room not secured? I've been through that with you several times. We need a walkthrough metal detector, not just police, because somebody could walk in with a Glock and begin blasting everybody. I went to the Russell Fock Arena on ASU, and they had packed, wonderful security. Everywhere you went in, there were metal detectors, walkthrough metal detectors. I'd never felt safer in my life. I don't feel safe in here. Somebody can stand up and begin shooting everybody. Don't think it'll happen? You're mistaken. It will happen. Uh, I went to Disneyland one year, and I spoke to the security guard. We had no protection for the, uh, put your packages down for examination, which against the Fourth Amendment. And, but the people weren't protected. A year later, there was a metal detector. Two seconds, I walked right through it. I felt wonderful. And I don't have to worry about nine o'clock, somebody can set off a suicide vest and take a hundred people with them. I don't care if he dies. I don't want any people going with him. So you think we're safe? We are not. We need security, and that's about all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other, any other cards?
Yes, Pam Agaloo.
Hi, Pam.
Hello. Pam Agaloo, full-time resident of Fountain Hills. That's impressive, the young girl that wrote about her father with pancreatic, uh, prostate cancer for the proclamation. I think that's important. September is also National Recovery Month. And recovery means that addicts like myself have been working a program or have been, and have been clean and sober. The reason there is Recovery Month is for people to realize that you can actually live and have fun sober. In my case, I've not taken any narcotics for my chronic pain since November twentieth, two thousand and twelve. And I just saw my, my doctor on Friday because I was in a lot of pain, and we talked about it, and, um, still didn't take narcotics. And, um, some days, that's really hard to do. I have to be honest. But I don't want to put my family through what I did, and I don't want to put myself through what I went through. Um, it's tough to maintain recovery, but, oh my goodness, is it a beautiful thing. I wouldn't be here if it hadn't been for the members of our wonderful Fountain Hills Fire Department and Rural Metro EMS. In one week, we will remember the national horror of nine eleven. Members of the New York Fire Department were the last, were lost trying to rescue people like myself, people that were just innocents, and I think it's important that we all remember that. Lastly, I just want to give my deepest gratitude to our own Fountain Hills Fire Department because if it had not been for them, and if they hadn't shown up, and if they hadn't overridden, um, law enforcement was there, um, I wouldn't be standing here. I really wouldn't. They knew what to do. They knew that I had overdosed, and they saved my life. So, um, to our own Fountain Hills Fire Department, I say thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Uh, any other cards? No? Thank you. Thank you all. Next is our consent agenda. Um, if anybody would like to make a motion, I'd appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Would, would you please, um, take the item for the Kiwanis lease and, uh, put that on our regular agenda for discussion?
You bet.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion for all the other items?
Also move.
Second.
Thank you all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so then we make that the first item, right? So the first item on our regular agenda now will be the consideration of approving a lease agreement with Kiwanis, Sunset Kiwanis for the building located at Kiwanis Drive. Grady?
Yes, uh, thank you. Mayor and council, before you, as a request, um, by the Kiwanis for a renewal of a lease, um, you probably are aware that, um, that the initial lease for this building was a twenty-five-year lease. There was no obligation on the part of the Kiwanis for maintaining the interior of the building. The town was completely responsible for both utilities and maintenance of the interior, um, as well as the outside of the building. Through the, um, the lease renewal, um, it's for a shorter term. It's only for ten years. It also, um, the, uh, lease also calls for them to pay for, uh, water and also, um, electricity. And, um, they are also responsible for maintaining the interior of the building. The exterior of the building, the roof, the, um, HVAC system, um, those will all be, um, the property of the town and, and the, uh, the maintenance of the town. The Kiwanis will also be responsible for, um, the, uh, the building premises, um, such as, um, you know, the, uh, the park area and all that. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this.
Thank you, Grady. Um, questions?
Grady, would you please give us a history of, from nineteen ninety-four with the Kiwanis and that building's original use? How, how we got to the point where that one particular service organization in town seems to be the only service organization in town that has this type of, I think, a special deal? And Councilman Spelitch has brought up in many times in the past in regards to, uh, costs and I think maybe holes in the bucket, so to speak, for our town. And this, this made me think of the whole conversation with the Chamber of Commerce and how we have some special arrangements with the Chamber of Commerce. And now with this, I think for discussion purposes, while I'm not opposed to this, I think that it's also, uh, important to recognize all the service organizations in town. And this particular building with this, this park, I've gone by there. I don't, I don't see it utilized very often. I don't see it really well-maintained, the, the park itself. I know we've talked about, and I know that the civics organization's talking about bocce courts at Fountain Park. I'm looking at a facility that has bocce, bocce currently there. So I guess I just wanted to bring this up for discussion and, and just get a sense of everyone else's perspective on this.
Anybody have any, uh, comments? Councilwoman Spelitch?
Councilman Tolles, I appreciate your, um, bringing this up. I think, um, we're kind of talking a little bit different. I don't believe that, and I'm not a member of the Kiwanis, so I, I don't know. But, um, I don't believe that you can compare the Chamber of Commerce with the Kiwanis Club. The Chamber of Commerce running the art fairs and the profit that the Chamber of Commerce makes versus what the Kiwanis Club do, um, I, I don't think it's an equal comparison. Um, for everything being equal, um, but I think trying to draw, um, a correlation between the Kiwanis Club and the Chamber of Commerce in this particular instance, um, I don't, I don't see it.
Mayor, may I respond?
Councilman?
So let me, let me, uh, clarify and make that correlation, okay? So when the Chamber of Commerce has fees eliminated for the art fair, per se, and then they contract out with a service organization like the Rotary Clubs in town, and they provide a ten thousand dollar contract for the two art fairs, that is going back to the service organizations. And in this particular case, with a special lease of a dollar a year and providing a building to another service organization that has pancake fundraisers, that has a lot of things that they do at that building, I do think there's a correlation. And I, and I think it is a worthy, I think it's worthy for us to support these service organizations. So I just wanted to point out, and I wanted to bring this to a discussion because there are a lot of these arrangements and these types of agreements with service organizations in the town for the benefit of residents. So again, I wanted to bring this up for discussion. I wanted to put this on the table. I think that there, there is some relevance here to talking about this when we talk about cost savings or, for that matter, services and, and, uh, benefits to the community that we provide to these organizations. That's the correlation that I wanted to bring to the table.
Councilwoman Spelitch?
So let me get this right. You believe that the Kiwanis Club generates as much money as the Chamber of Commerce?
You, you missed, you missed, uh, you missed the, the point, David, uh, Councilman Spelitch. The, the Chamber of Commerce, in that conversation we had months ago, we, we alleviate a number of fees for the art fairs. They have a contract with a service organization, the Rotary, that they provide ten thousand dollars to the Rotary to pick up the trash for that art fair. This is a lease on a building that the fair market rent for that building, if we wanted to go out for organizations to utilize, I would, I would be, I'd be willing to bet we would receive, I don't know, eight hundred dollars a month to, for utilization of that building? That's equivalent essentially to what the other service organizations are getting for some of the other fees that we eliminate by, by working with the Chamber, for that matter. But this is just one other example. There's plenty that I'm sure we've talked about over the course of our discussions on the council that, uh, I feel that all these service organizations should have some sort of benefit. When I looked at this, and I thought, that building could be utilized for many organizations in town. And the Kiwanis has been utilizing it. I just wanted to get a history. I wanted to have a discussion about it. I, I am not saying we shouldn't allow this with, with the Kiwanis, but I just wanted to get a discussion of how are we working with all these other service organizations as well? And is, is there a fair playing field?
Well, let me just speak from my perspective, um, and from the perspective of this council. There's been a movement, um, over the years to try to shed ourselves of cost avoidance. Um, as you recall, the Fountain Hills Theater, we went through that process a few years ago. That was another building where the town, um, sunk a lot of money into it. They also, the theater also was able to get, um, a lot of donations and, and contractors had put work into that. But that was one of those situations where, um, the town chose not to, um, continue doing the maintenance and, and wanted to get rid of the building. This is very similar. If, if I had my druthers, I would have liked to have had this building be one of those. But the, um, the organization's been treating it really well. They've been, had, they have a great track record there at the location. Um, and this is a situation that I thought this was the best of all worlds, where we actually had them, uh, from, really going from a dollar a year, the town's paying for utilities and water and, and maintaining interior, exterior, everything. This was, in my mind, um, actually, if we couldn't get rid of the building, this was the next best thing, which is avoiding costs to maintain that building. So I think this is really from, from a management's perspective and from a town's perspective. Regardless of your, your points you're making, that was what was driving this, this recommendation that's before you tonight.
Anything further? Motion? Oh, Councilman?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I'd just like to add, I, I mean, I, I am a Kiwanian, but, um, in the noon Kiwanis, so, uh, we store our trailers and other equipment at this building. And, um, you know, obviously, as Grady mentioned, with this new lease, it's, uh, putting more burden on Sunset Kiwanis in terms of picking up a lot of the, the, uh, ongoing costs. And, and the other thing- And the other thing too, which is unique to this, I'm really not aware of many other, if any, other arrangements we have with nonprofits like this. But since it is a town-owned property, I mean, the town, Community Services Department and whatnot can utilize that building as well for programming and classes and activities. I know years ago, they used to use it on a regular basis. That's, they've kind of shied away from that recently. But obviously during the busy season, our community center fills up rather quickly with a lot of classes and programming during the day and evening weekends. But, so the town can obviously utilize this building for anything it wants, since it, you know, town owns it. So I just think it's a unique arrangement and, you know, just think, you know, that needed to be pointed out as well.
Thank you, councilman.
Is that, is that park accessible to the public? In this lease, it would not appear that it is.
It's not a private park. So they have it primarily because it's at that location that they can access it. But there's nothing that prevents anyone from using the park at this point.
So those bocce ball courts that are being promoted from some organizations in town at this point right now, would they be able to utilize those?
Yes, although I think they're looking at a different location for that, but yes.
But they can start using those if they wanted to start leagues?
If they were maintained up to the level that they would want.
Great.
Councilman?
Grady, when will there be a discussion? I know that you and I talked in our one-on-one monthly session. When will there be a discussion about the fees just in general? Because I have plenty to say on this, but I don't believe that this is the proper forum for it. I do not understand Councilman Tolles's correlation between the Kiwanis Building and the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, plus, I honestly, or to be honest with you, I don't think you should really be voting or talking about the Chamber of Commerce. You are on the Board of Directors and everything. I think it's a conflict of interest, to be quite honest with you.
I was on the Board of Directors 10 years ago. I was also the treasurer for the Chamber.
Doesn't make a difference.
Councilman, so we will talk to this issue right here, which is Kiwanis. I appreciate that.
So I just wanted to know when we're going to be discussing that?
We have it on the agenda. I think it was emailed.
It's parked as a future agenda item.
Very soon. I wanted to mention a little bit about the history because I was, used to help take care of that building. I managed it. And then probably 30 years ago, the Kiwanis Club built the first Edith House, which was brought over to all the kids in the schools to learn how to get out of a situation if there's a fire. They built this whole trailer thing and they all did all the work. So there's going to be a lot of nuance in this upcoming conversation. But I'd appreciate a motion if anybody would like to do that.
Make a motion, we approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Leave it seven, nothing to approve. Thank you. Now we'll go to appointment of Strategic Planning Advisory Commission. I wanted to thank our subcommittee for getting together and making a recommendation. So I will move to appoint Jerry Friedel, John McHugh, and Chad Burnick to the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission with terms to expire April of 2022. And I can have a second and then discussion, right? If there's any.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is planning and zoning. Let's see, move, I would move to approve Dan Kavasovic, Clayton Corey, and Susan Dempster to the Planning and Zoning Commission with terms to expire on April 2022. A second?
Second.
Thanks again to the committee, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then last is Sister Cities Advisory Commission. And I would like to appoint, I'd like to move to appoint Enrique Melendez, Nicholas Stumpf for terms that would expire on October 2022.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, mayor.
Yes, sir.
When we talk about the Planning and Zoning Commission appointments, I understand that the turnover is not exactly the same with the commissions. And I would ask Director John Wright, please come up and address that for us.
Thank you.
Yes, mayor and council, with those appointments, Susan Dempster is currently on the commission, and that's a reappointment, and so that's smooth and straightforward. We have one vacancy on the commission. And so one of the two new appointments, Clayton or Dan's filling that vacancy. And the other one is a board member, Jones, who will, whose term will end at the end of September. And so one of the other two will fill that position. And so we'll work with them about which one is filling, and as the council gives us some direction, which one of those two new appointments is filling the vacancy and which one's filling the term that will expire at the end of September.
Is that going to be left up to the council?
Direction from the council would be helpful. Versus staff picking.
I do have the recommendation to have Clayton Corey immediately take the vacancy. And when Chris...
Jones.
Christopher Jones?
Right.
Yes, exactly. When that term ends, I would say Dan should be seated at that point.
Okay, that makes it clear for us.
Thank you. Thank you, councilman. Our next, sorry, our next item is item 8E. Grady?
Yes, I'm not seeing the Public Works Director, but I'll have the street superintendent come up.
8D, sorry about that. Hi.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
I don't think he was planning on doing this, I apologize, Jeff. I don't know why Justin's not here this moment. He was just here just a moment ago. So basically, it would be great if you can go ahead and just kind of give an overview of what the purchase entails and why we plan on using these pieces of equipment.
Grady?
Yes.
Would you like me to take another item first? Would that be helpful, or it's up to you?
Sure. Why don't we move on to F, and why don't you go grab Justin?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Consideration of approving the renewal of a contract with Pierce Coleman. Grady?
Yes, mayor and council, before you is a recommendation to approve the renewal of the contract with Pierce Coleman for provision of town attorney services. In September of last year, the council went ahead and appointed Pierce Coleman to be the legal services law firm that provides legal services to the town. We commonly put a face with that law firm, and that's actually Aaron Aronson. And so the cost originally was for $180,000 a year ago. The renewal price is approximately $234,000. We will try to get through this contract so it's calibrated with our fiscal year. And then from that point forward, it will be on a fiscal year basis rather than this time of year, each year. In the past, we had another law firm that was just before his law firm, that was an interim law firm. And the current year, I'm sorry, last year, we had that law firm work up until about October, November as part of that transition occurred. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, or maybe Mr. Aronson would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Oh, and the key part I missed is, this is a fixed-price contract. So what that means is, we pay for the next 12 months, the $234,000. There will be no adjustments during that 12 months at all, which is a different feature and unique feature than you typically see with other law firms.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, mayor. Grady, if I may, when they actually went to work free for the first six months, just kidding, did we not have a cap on the amount of increase per annual increase on this contract?
We had a discussion with the principal during the interview, but it was not in the contract. It was never in the contract. And then, but we did get, if you remember right, and I can't really go into a lot of discussion at this meeting, they had proposed one price, and thanks to you, you were able to get it down from what that price had been. And I can't, again, that's probably saying more than I should have.
Thanks to you. Congratulations, councilman.
No, no, he brought it up during the meeting, if you remember.
So I do remember.
And our attorney that we're talking about is getting nervous over there about what we're talking about, so.
No, I understand. And if, mayor, if I may add something. That price that was discussed last year, if you compare, they are public records. It's a, it is a very actually common price for all the municipalities that we service compared to the amount of work that's going on. So I think that this price, given that the town is trending towards a higher number, we want to be in it for the long term. So we're still offering a lower number, which I hope gives both sides the benefit of the bargain. And I don't expect there to be sizable increases in the future because I think this is the right place to be, if that makes sense.
This appears to be about a 20% increase, am I seeing this correctly? So I would hate to think that is going to be the trend.
In fact, councilman, it has not been the trend at the other municipalities that we've serviced. In fact, City of Tolleson actually had a decrease, must have been this last year. I'm hoping that, as Grady and I have discussed, that there are some measures I think that we can implement to where we may actually be able to see a decrease.
In fact, we actually do have measures already that, like, for instance, the staff can't reach out to him directly. They have to do a request for legal services, those get my eyes on him. That way, we're not monopolizing his time and having the clock run.
I am in no way saying that the $234,000 annual contract is out of line in any way, especially the way it's structured, for so the staff can't just walk in and take up hours of your time. I mean, we thought through this very carefully, but I didn't remember the 20% aspect of it. And if you tell me that that did not get put in the contract, I understand.
Yeah, it was never, it was never, it was a discussion, but it was not a feature of the contract. And the one thing, if you recall, is that the way that the contract is framed is that they're basing their next year, it's almost in a way, and I hate to use this phrase, but it's almost like the law enforcement services. It's based on pretty much the prior 12 months of what the experience has been as far as what their hours and such are. But it can also go down the other direction as well. It's unlike the other.
Thank you, Grady.
Councilman Tolles?
Thank you. I think that the firm's been a great job. And I've been through two different firms since being appointed to this council. And as our town manager indicated, we've saved a substantial amount of money from our previous contracts. And as our town manager also indicated, we can't discuss what happens in executive session. But I know that what does happen there, I think the public needs to know that we're being very well represented. And I think that this is very fair. And I imagine that if we did want to know for our own sake what those analysis of the 12 months billable hours were, so that we can keep track of this going forward, that's something that would be available to us in executive session.
It would be. In fact, we have billings that are very detailed that shows every minute that they are working. And so they are, even though it shows actually, if we were to be paying, it would actually be more than what we're actually billed for. But yes, that is available to you and for public inspection.
Any other comments? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I just wanted to, what are also say, the same type of sentiment that Councilman Tolles has said, which I really appreciate your services, a new person on the council, and you've been very receptive. I've appreciated the depth of your advice, and I think I may not reach out to you so often. Maybe we can reduce some of the bill. But I appreciate your responsiveness, thank you.
Mayor, councilman, thank you so much, appreciate that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, we're very happy to have the predictability and the professional counsel. As I would say that we did before, Grady knows that I took a little exception to the price range here in the report because after we lost, or Gus Rosenfeld left, we were spending $12,000 more per month while we had the interim. So to, that's not a good reflection of the kind of costs that we were getting. And in fact, it was about $290,000. So that doesn't distract from anything that you're doing for us. And I look forward to our future here together. And it's really been a pleasure working with you, and we really appreciate your help. Anything else?
Make a motion.
You bet.
I'd make a motion to approve the contract with the law firm of Pierce Coleman, P L L C, for the provisions of legal services to the town of Fountain Hills for the amount of $234,000 annual. And I would also like to add to this motion that he can leave the rookie hat at home. I think he can leave that.
I've graduated.
Officially?
Second to that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Justin is back in the room, so we'll go back to our 8D, purchase of utility carts. And I hope you're feeling okay.
Yes, sir.
Need any help there?
Public Works Director is going to take over from where the street superintendent left off, so. He's very relieved, Justin, you were able to come back. So with that, I'll turn it over to Justin. Justin, if you wouldn't mind, for the benefit of the mayor and council and the public here, it'd be very helpful for you to explain what these purchases are and what the cost is and how they benefit the Public Works Department.
Absolutely, thank you. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, councils, thank you for the brief interruption to the agenda. I had to make an adjustment to my most recently acquired attire for comfort reasons. The first item that we have tonight is our request to replace five of the utility vehicles that we use at all of the town's parks primarily. They are used for other things. These items range in years old from seven to eight. This request is in compliance with the vehicle replacement policy that was adopted some time back. I would like to take a moment and thank Director Goodwin and her staff for spending the additional time and doing all the additional research to find some vehicles that were reasonably priced and better suited to their needs. In doing so, we were also able to secure a contract for these, where they're usually sold for much larger quantities. And we negotiated, and in my opinion, and the opinion of Director Goodwin, we did get a good price for these. And I would be willing to answer any questions that you would have about any one of those vehicles.
Do you have any questions for Justin? Councilman?
Thank you, mayor. These are the little utility trucks that we see picking up the garbage at four o'clock in the morning at the park and the little trucks that you see all over town, actually.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Brown, that is correct, with the exception of one. One of them is actually a Sand Pro, and this is the vehicle that is utilized to maintain the outfield and all the other non-turfed surfaces in our parks. But other than that, yes, they are multipurpose vehicles. One of them is a little bit specialized.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Thank you. Is that good enough? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, seven, nothing. Thanks, Justin, you're up next.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. Justin, if you would continue on this item, I understand we might have some questions from the council. So if you wouldn't mind explaining again what the purpose of the equipment is, how much it's costing, and the benefit of the equipment.
Yes, sir, thank you. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, over the last several years, the town had numerous pieces of equipment that just simply aged out. And as a result of a shortfall in funding or decisions that were made some years ago, that equipment was not replaced and/or it was not feasible to replace. The first item that we're going to discuss on this one is the request to purchase a power broom. This is not a street sweeper, but rather a broom that allows us to remove storm debris from the road and move it onto the shoulder and allow us to pick it up later. It can also be used to remove large quantities of screws or glass or smaller items after a crash. It also, in this particular case, this one comes with water and a suppression system and allows us to use it for sweeping or cleaning our sidewalks in Fountain Park, some of the local along Saworo, some of those wider sidewalks. It's a multipurpose, but its primary use is to aid the staff with the cleanup of storm debris after a storm event. Having said that, we do have a contract for street sweeping. The street sweeping contract that we have and the equipment that is manufactured as a whole for that activity will not pick up large quantities of material or anything that's really about over a half or three quarters of an inch thick. It simply takes too long, and it takes too many passes, and it slows down the process for the typical street sweep. So, having said that, in regards to the power broom, I will answer any questions that you have on that piece of equipment, and then we'll move to the next one.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Justin. I can see the value possibly in the broom. I don't know that this is the piece, firstly, I have to trust your judgment and your opinion on what you're buying, but I have to also question if we really need the broom or not, because the way it was actually presented was to help clean up after monsoon events. And as best as I remember, we haven't had a monsoon event this year that has required this type of equipment. And I question as to whether it wouldn't be more feasible for us to continue looking to lease or to contract out the need for this type of equipment. Now, granted, we finally have a little money in our coffers, but I would feel much more comfortable talking about the possibility of contracting this out for a few more years to where we actually are comfortable with the amount of funds that we have in our vehicle replacement fund before we go out and purchase this. I would also, I would also say that, of course, we should look at different options. And you'll hear me talk about the skip loader versus a skid steer, because a skid steer, as you very well know, has the options of putting on several more adapter, like a broom or like a auger or, and would be more, I think, appropriate for the cleaning of the sidewalk when the ducks are in season at the fountain. And because that has always been and always will be a concern. But right now, I'm going to say that I would feel better continuing to contract that service out opposed to buying new equipment.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Brown, that is a very legitimate concern. And agreed, we have not yet this year received a big enough storm event that would require us to have this type of equipment. In the past, the challenges that we faced in regards to the power broom was the fact that the majority of the rental facilities simply do not have them in their yards, they're rented out because of lots of requirements. And also, the leasing really isn't in the best interest for the long term for the town because of the cost. It's very valid, and I certainly understand your concerns, but we have done our research on this, and we believe based on past history and the challenges that we've had to secure one of these, in some cases, it took days for us to get one. We were fortunate that a local contractor had one rented, and we had a contract with him. And so, he was able to utilize one last year. There are barriers that prevent us from getting one in a timely manner.
And I truly appreciate that, I truly do. But I still feel like that after you buy the equipment, and you have to store it, and you have to insure it, and you have to maintain it, and you've got to train somebody to operate it, and then we have a little turnover, and we have to train somebody else, or we have somebody that's not really qualified to run it, on it, and they do damage to it. I'm just, I'm still saying I would feel better about, until we have more funds in our coffer to procure items like this, I still feel that we'd be money ahead as a town to contract it out. I don't know if, and I don't know if our contract with the street sweeping company, if they have brooms. It would surprise me if they don't. I don't know if Performance or Karoom, who are right here in town, have brooms, and I don't. But I would, I would say before we go out and buy one, I would like to go ahead and look at other options.
Absolutely, your concerns are warranted. The next item on this is a skip loader and/or a ganon. The town had one of these in the past, it simply aged out. It was decided at that time that it was not necessary that we would farm out the services to help us clean this up, not unlike some other challenges we've had. We've not been real successful in keeping contracts for this type of equipment handy and local and readily available. In this particular case, this one will not only be utilized to support the equipment that we have now, but also be utilized for parks and other places. It's smaller, a little bit easier to get around the ballparks and stuff. But again, its primary use is to clean up after storms and to be utilized to move material from bins into dump trucks or into chipper shredders and stuff like that, again, after storm events.
Question about this one?
I do. Of course, in the day, I knew how to operate this equipment. And I was on a piece of equipment last week, that exactly the same loader, the skip loader that you're looking at. And it is, it was a little bit like me learning how to use a computer 10 years ago. I mean, I would, I could barely start the equipment. And we have a $130,000 backhoe that has the same bucket on it. The bucket may even be a little larger on the backhoe than what the skip loader has. And I would like to think that if we can't take care of it with our backhoe when we truly do need a skip loader, I know for a fact that we have three, if not four, that are owned by local contractors that I would like to think would appreciate the work that the town gives them to the point that we could put them on a two-hour notice or a three-hour notice to go out and get the equipment and bring it in. And once again, it's not necessarily the price of the equipment, it's the storage, it's the insurance, it's the maintenance, it's training somebody to properly use it, so they don't tear the equipment up or they don't tear up the streets worse than they're already torn up before we get on. And I watched you run the backhoe, and I told you the day that I saw that how impressed I was. I don't know if we have anybody else in town that can even run that backhoe like you do. And I question as to whether we can put somebody in training out in a parking lot and teach them how to run a piece of equipment like this, and then three months later, ask them to get on it and get it in a tight situation on a street and clean it up. Now, if we had the money, I would say, Justin, I'm all over it. But right now, we're just in recovery mode, and I still believe that with, especially on this item, where Performance has a couple, and I think Karoom has a couple, that we could get contracts with both of them to where they could come out and assist us as needed. And I'm sure they would.
Your concerns are dearly noted, absolutely.
I'm the last one in the world that would want to take.
Mayor and Council, in light of the questions that Councilmember Brown has asked, I think it's worth for the staff and I to further explore some of the options that have been mentioned. And we'll come back at a later date if there's going to be some impacts where we need to bring this back. But I certainly appreciate the questions being raised, and we'll go sharpen our pencils and look at some of these other alternatives that have been mentioned. And we'll be back, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, appreciate that. Thank you for your questions. I think, like I was telling you earlier, we're a little out of some of our wheelhouse here, so we're relying on this kind of back and forth, and we really appreciate that. So, this is the end of our actual real meeting. Is there a council discussion or direction to the town manager? At this point, I think I adjourn, right? I'm going to adjourn the meeting, then we're going to have a special work-study session. So, do I have a motion? Am I doing something wrong?
So, are we going to just table the last?
I just removed it.
You just removed it, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Yes, Grady?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, you recall, we were trying to get together several of these potential work session dates. We have a lot of strategic items that we need to bring before you. And one of the more important items that we wanted to get to as soon as possible has to do with our pavement management program. You recall when we were going through our budget process late spring, we talked about the need to come back with a 10-year pavement management program. And really, what we're here tonight is to try to get some policy direction on what would be considered the pavement conditions that would be acceptable to the council for arterials, collector streets, and local streets. And so, we have been working with our outside firm IMS to help us with that. And so, what we're going to do is, there's a presentation that Zach Thomason will be giving, but I know that our Public Works Director has a few words before we turn it over to Mr. Thomason.
First, I better call the meeting to order.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
So, this work-study session is called to order. Everybody's present, there's no public comment at work-study sessions. We're here to learn, and we won't be taking any votes. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Walde?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm going to give you a little short history on the paving. In 1989, the town was incorporated. Shortly thereafterwards, the road districts became a part of the town. It was decided by that time by the elected officials and the management that they would continue to utilize the road districts process of zones, one through seven. One through six were your typical roads, including your collectors and your locals, minor collectors. And number seven was all of the arterials. That was continued for a number of years. Based on the research that we've done, that staff with the funding available did a pretty good job of keeping up with things. Included in that were several other bonding issues, developer issues, and shared monies from MCO to pave a large number of streets and do maintenance on other streets. Having said that, in 2015, there was a resolution. In 2012 was a resolution passed, and that resolution was to try and catch up on some of the backlogs in the zones that were not being finished. It was decided at that time, we would pick zone number two, since that was the next one. We waited and did not spend any of that money that year. The next year, we dove right into that zone and begun to work on it. The previous director brought forward shortly thereafterwards a proposal to the mayor and council to get a pavement assessment done. That was declined, we moved forward from that, kept working. I later brought that back, the mayor and council approved it. We now have that report, and we've had it for a couple of years. We have been utilizing that PCI rating that we have there of saving what we can save, when we can save it. And we have the funding to save that as we move forward here and establish a new plan. The gentleman that is here tonight to do this presentation, and the staff from IMS has been working with the town and establishing what we're going to refer to as the level of service. What level of service do we want to provide? The intent tonight is to provide as much information to the mayor and council as we possibly can on our current situation, future situation, and scenarios that we could use moving forward. And we understand there's not a vote tonight, so this is purely informational that will allow you to make an educated decision on the future moving forward when we bring this back.
Well, and let me just clarify, while there's no vote tonight, because it is a work session, we'll be trying to seek a consensus. So, just so that we have the direction on which way to go on these street condition standards.
Thank you.
Councilman Charneau?
Yes, a quick question, Justin. Reading the staff summary, talks about, so after we come to this consensus tonight, it says then staff will work with an outside engineering firm to develop a 10-year pavement management program. So, does that entail another consultant fee in study? Or has that already been covered, or how does that?
This firm right now, IMS, they started assisting us back in 2017. In fact, when we came up with the plan to drop the zone, they were the ones that came up with the triage approach, is what they had talked about. Those, you try to save the streets you can. Those that you can't, let them go into a backlog kind of situation, and try to focus and emphasize arterials. So, we have them under contract, they're here tonight, and they will be also helping us develop this 10-year pavement management plan. They're also the ones that did the initial assessment, as Mr. Walde indicated, where they drove across all the streets in the town and collected the data on our streets' conditions. And then, they were able to help us with that. So, basically, they have this data, and every time we update our streets and do major mill and overlay or reconstruction, they're updating all their databases with that, and then they're kind of reassessing where we are. So, they're currently under contract that we have right now.
Ready to get started, then?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, we'll go ahead and call Zach Thomason, who is with IMS. He's with the firm that we've been working with. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Thomason.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you so much. All right, certainly want to thank the mayor and council for having me out tonight. It is absolute pleasure to be here. I do these presentations across the country, and it is so nice to be able to drive from my home in Chandler, not too far away. So, that is a nice treat for me. Again, my name is Zach Thomason with IMS. Just some brief history. So, we did mobilize our equipment to Fountain Hills early 2018. We did our initial inspection then. This analysis and this data that we're going to be presenting to you tonight is a status update on the 2019 state of the roadway network. So, we used the condition data that was collected and captured back in 2018, aged the data appropriately, and then also updated the models to reflect all the good work that you folks have done over the last year and a half. So, tonight's data is the most current analysis data that's available using the information collected in 2018. Let's first take a look at the scale of investment. So, the town owns and maintains approximately 163 centerline miles of road. That equates to 3.6 million square yards of pavement. And quite frankly, that makes your roads the single largest visible asset that folks feel and see on a daily basis. And that asset is valued at approximately $1.3 million per mile or a total aggregate of $216 million. And that's a total replacement value. Meaning, if you went out today and replaced all those roads, the surface and the base, and made them brand-new and like-new condition as they should be, that is the total replacement value of that road network. So, it's a large asset that you folks are maintaining on a daily basis. If we take an early look at the condition scores, the network average pavement condition index, the PCI score, is a 63. So, if we dump all the scores across all the segments and blocks of road that you maintain, if we dump those into a blender and hit frappe, the network average across the entire town is a 63, okay? Now, that lands in what we call the good category. That's a rather vague statement. Good from a pavement management perspective may not be good to you folks here in Fountain Hills. So, we're going to talk about level of service and what those conditions look like in the field as well. And then, we'll also put that into context in terms of where do other folks stand? Where do other folks stand across the valley as well? The town's backlog. Backlog is all the costly reconstruction work to be done in the town. It's your full reconstruction candidates, and it's your partial reconstruction candidates, such as full surface removals. Consider it the expensive work that needs to be done. Five and a half percent of your road network falls into that category of costly work, okay? Now, from a pavement management perspective, anything less than 12% is considered financially ideal from a pavement management perspective. So, you're well below that mark. Now, the key here, the biggest challenge for the town that we're going to talk through tonight is what's the cost of arresting any growth in backlog? And that's the Town of Fountain Hills' single largest challenge that we're going to talk about in terms of, that backlog is going to grow exponentially over time at different funding levels. So, we'll certainly touch on that as well. So, why do pavement management in the first place? And the simple answer is, it's far more cost-effective to maintain an asset over its life than it is to let it deteriorate and rebuild it at a later time. And if we take a look at that red line there that you see on your screens, that's the typical average deterioration of a pavement. And in the first 40% of a pavement's life, it only has a 15% drop in quality. So, it's a fairly shallow slope and a fairly slow. So, it's a fairly shallow slope and a fairly slow rate of deterioration. But in the next 15% of that pavement's life, it has a 40% drop in quality. So, that's that cliff there, so to speak. So, behooves us to spend a dollar maintaining our asset in good condition as opposed to deferring maintenance and rebuilding at a later time. The best analogy that I can give you folks is that roads and pavements are no different than the cars that we drive on a daily basis. We change the oil, we flush the coolant, we rotate the tires in an effort to maximize the life of our vehicle at the absolute lowest cost. So, we make a conscious decision. Are we going to change the oil every 3,000 miles, or are we going to swap the engine every 30,000 miles? Both are acceptable decisions. One has a huge financial impact at the end of the day. Now, there's also a right time and a right place to capture roads and effectively maximize the life of the road at the lowest cost. So, if we can capture roads in that target zone before they fall off that theoretical cliff there, we can effectively extend the life of the road at the absolute lowest cost. And that gray target zone is roughly roads that fall between a PCI score of about a 65 and an 85. That's spending the dollar now in favor of deferring maintenance and spending more money later. So, that's just the simple concept of pavement management. Now, the concept of pavement management is really a balance of three specific ingredients, and it has to be all three. It can't just be one. The first ingredient is understanding town objectives, understanding existing level of service policies, what conditions are acceptable in Fountain Hills. What do we consider good? What do we consider not good? Those are local decisions that we have to apply to the pavement management models within the system. And we also have to understand existing budget constraints. What happens to the network condition over time at existing funding levels? That's ingredient one. Ingredient number two is understanding the condition of the road network. Now, that's what we did early last year. We drove the network. We assessed conditions. We have to know the condition of the asset before we can plot a course forward and develop a long-term game plan. The third ingredient is rolling in industry-standard prioritization techniques and optimization techniques in terms of bringing cost-benefit equations into the pavement analysis as well. So, some tools we use to rate the streets, I don't know if everybody had a chance to see the van when it was in town early last year. That's the laser road surface tester that was mobilized to town. That's a mobile van that's equipped with high-speed lasers, HD cameras, and GPS technology, and its job is simply to assess the condition of the surface defects on the road. So, alligator cracking, bleeding, potholes, patching, you name it. It collects a full suite of these surface defects. That information is then used to calculate a PCI score on every block or every segment of road in the town. Now, we've talked a little bit about PCI. Let's take a look at what PCI looks like in the field, just so we can put it all into perspective. Because we often throw out numbers, and a lot of times, those numbers don't mean anything, but a picture's worth a thousand words. This is a very poor road. Now, granted, one disclaimer, these images were pulled from the survey that we did in early 2018. So, there are some roads that you have done rehabs on since that time, but just note, these were for illustration purposes only. So, this particular road falls in the very poor category, which means it scores between a 0 and a 25 in a PCI. If we assigned a letter grade to it, it would score an F. It has failed. It needs a complete reconstruction. It's the most costly type of street you can get. So, streets in this category have base and structural failures. They have a lot of rutting, and they have excessive cracking. A road in this category is far past the point of overlay-based rehabilitation. It needs a full reconstruction. We cannot salvage it. Triage is done on these particular roads. We can't save it any further. Rehab's on these roads are often driven by citizen complaints, and quite frankly, safety does become a concern as the PCI drops below, say, a 10. Potholes and distortions can form very rapidly, especially after large weather events. You know, if we have freezing, or we have snow, or excessive rain, we don't get a whole lot of the first two, but on occasion, they do happen. Those can certainly assist in the potholes and heaves from happening as well. So, if we go to the next category, this is actually two categories that I merged together for the sake of brevity. These are the poor and marginal roads that score between a 25 and a 50. In terms of a letter grade, these would be a letter grade of a D. These roads have localized base failures. They do have rutting at intersections. They have extensive cracking, and they have a lot of patching. And these are simply tired streets that have served the citizens well for a very long time, but they're in need of something progressively heavier now. They need a thick overlay to possibly a full surface removal on these particular routes. And from a pavement management perspective, these roads are a high priority. It's not just focusing on that gray target zone of roads between a 65 and an 85. It's also focusing on roads that we can salvage, that we can save, that we can apply the principles of triage to. So, for example, if we can capture roads that fall between a 40 and a 50, that are currently in a thick overlay rehab strategy, the cost of deferral is exponential, which means if we do defer those roads and let them drop into backlog, it's going to cost us 100% more later as a result of that decision. So, it's a balance. We can't just tackle the good roads, and we can't just tackle the bad roads. We have to maximize the funds we have from a financial perspective as best we can. The fair roads, these are the roads that score between a 50 and a 60. They would be a letter grade of C. These roads do have progressive cracking, but they have fewer base failures. They do have localized distresses. Roads in this category would be an optimum timing for a thin to a moderate overlay, and there's a lot of benefits in selecting these types of streets that result in an early lower cost and a greater return to us. We're doing less grinding work in the field, and there's less drainage work to be concerned about as well. Some of the good roads between a 60 and a 70, these are roads that fall in the category, or I should say, the letter grade of a B. These roads have few localized distresses and minimal base failures. If a road in this category was distressed due to loading, meaning it's exhibiting the presence of load-associated distresses, these are distresses known to be caused by the pounding of traffic, so alligator cracking, rutting, and distortions. If it's exhibiting those distresses, it's going to trigger an appropriate rehab strategy, such as a thin overlay within the pavement management program. But if it is not exhibiting those load-associated distresses, this is where we get a bit of a cost-benefit. We can apply a lightweight surface treatment that is far more cost-effective because we do not have those load-related problems on these particular roads. So, we can maximize the life of the road at the absolute lowest cost by applying surface treatments where appropriate is the key. The very good roads, these are roads that score between a 70 and 85. They get an A. They're in pretty good shape. They have very few distresses, no rutting, no base failures. Simple crack seal with a surface treatment on these roads is sufficient. We extend the pavement life at the absolute lowest cost. Lastly, the excellent roads, these are all roads that score above a PCI score of an 85. So, they're an A+. They're in like-new condition. We've done something to them recently. There's very few minor distresses, a smooth ride, and roads in this category should provide a solid five to 10 years prior to the first rehab with some routine maintenance. So, we've talked about PCI. We know what it looks like. Let's take a look at the data now. This is the PCI distribution graph that we have plotted. So, we have PCI in increments of 10 on the x-axis, and we have the percentage of the network by area on the y-axis. The red bars is your distribution. So, it's telling you what percentage of your network falls into those different PCI buckets on the graph. The blue line is the typical distribution that we expect to see from agencies across the nation. So, typically, we expect to see a bell curve that's skewed to the right and centered between about a 60 and a 70. Your distribution curve is not typical. So, what we can see here in this graph is that you have far more roads between a 40 and a 50 PCI than is typical for other agencies, and far fewer roads between a 50 and a 90. So, what this tells us, before we even get into the pavement analysis, just looking at this graph, this tells us that our single biggest challenge is going to be backlog growth. It's going to be arresting the growth in backlog, all that big-ticket work, because our backlog number right now is only 5.5%. But that's going to grow at a rather alarming rate because of the number of roads that fall within that 40 and 50 zone. So, we know right off the bat, the analysis is going to have to focus on arresting that growth. And those roads that fall between a 40 and a 50, I like to call those, that is backlog coming to fruition at a future date very rapidly. These roads are at the steepest part of their pavement deterioration curve. They want to fall into backlog as fast as they can. So, we really, from a pavement management perspective, have to balance tackling as many of those roads as we can to save exponentially moving forward while not ignoring the roads that are in good condition as well. It's a tough challenge. If we take a look at another PCI distribution graph, this time on the x-axis, we're using descriptive terms. So, these are the same descriptive terms that we just went through with the imagery, ranging from very poor to excellent. And there's three metrics of health that we generally use to assess any given agency across the country. The first is the network average PCI. If we looked at that number alone, your average is a 63. The average that we currently see across the nation is between a 60 and a 65. You're smack in the middle by chance. So, from a PCI perspective alone, you're average when it comes to that average number. With backlog, again, your backlog is at 5.5%. From a pavement management perspective, anything less than or equal to 12% is considered manageable. It's a nice, average, financially manageable number. 15% becomes our maximum recommended mark to any given agency, meaning as backlog grows and exceeds that 15% mark, in an ideal situation, we would want to cap backlog at that mark. And the reason for that is because as backlog approaches and exceeds about the 20% mark, it can effectively spiral out of control on you, meaning you can't pump enough capital into the pavement management system to catch up because backlog starts growing at an alarming rate. So, with that note, what I want to point out is the number of roads that fall into that marginal category, again, 30% of your network is in what I would call a thick overlay candidate. It's at the steepest part of its curve, and the pavement management program over the 10-year horizon is going to need to focus on arresting the growth in backlog. And the reality is, it's not going to be able to capture them all at the current funding rate. There are going to be many roads that slip through, and I'm going to show you how that backlog grows over time at the current budget constraint. And the last metric of health is the percent of excellent roads, so all roads that score above a PCI score of an 85. Generally, we like to see a bare bones minimum of 15% of the network falling into that category. You folks came through on that one at roughly 17% of the network in the excellent category. So, we did meet that metric there. If we take a look at the same PCI distribution by functional classification, we see similar trends. So, we can see that it's the local roads and the collector roads that make up the vast majority of those roads between a 40 and a 50, and that's going to be our single biggest challenge in the pavement management program over the long-term horizon. Now, in terms of setting some minimum targets, we would certainly recommend a minimum target on arterials of greater than or equal to a 70. Arterials serve more people. They serve commerce. They serve heavier traffic, truck traffic, and they're deteriorating at a more rapid rate on us. Collector roads, greater than or equal to a 65. Local roads, greater than or equal to a 60. These are by no means written in stone. If you wanted a higher level of service in Fountain Hills, you could most certainly adopt a higher level of service. With that said, there's always a price tag that comes with different level of services as well. So, one of the goals of this session is to establish what those goals might be, so we can run the models in the pavement management system against them and define what that number or that value is. Let's talk about the analysis methodology that we used here real quick, too. We know funding is not $0. We have to maintain our assets, but we also know it's not unlimited. We're working with constrained funds, and the idea is to maximize those as efficiently as we can. We know the town places a value on all its roads, its arterials, its collectors, and its locals alike. What we want to do from a pavement management perspective is identify the annual budget needed to maintain current PCI and maintain backlog. And in the town's case, those two numbers are not the same. The number that would be needed to maintain existing network average PCI scores is not the number that can control growth in backlog. So, we have to be ready to look at things from two different perspectives in the system. We want to examine current funding levels. We want to prevent deterioration in pavement quality. And a couple of side notes, ADA compliance costs are not included in the brief budget models that we did here with your existing budget. There's no cost of inflation built in. And the thing to remember is pavement management is priority-based. It's not worst-first. So, we don't simply line up the roads from best condition to worst and start tackling at the bottom. That's not financially efficient. That's equivalent to swapping the engine every 30,000 miles as opposed to changing the oil every 3,000 miles. So, when we take a look at the town's existing budget, what you're looking at here is a simple graph. On the x-axis, we've plotted the annual budget each year over the next 10 years. So, we've effectively done the first step in the 10-year horizon analysis model at the current funding level of $2 million. On the y-axis, you have the post-rehab PCI score, meaning what is the outcome at the existing expenditure. So, we can see right now, at $2 million annually, over the next 10 years, the network average PCI will decline to a 52. And that's a rather large drop, and it simply means we need more funds to feed the pavement management program if our desire is to maintain the existing average conditions within the system. One thing I should note, too, I'm just going to back up on that slide here real quick. If you looked at, sorry, I'm looking for the page-up button, and I do not see it. Maybe? There we go. One thing to note, if you look at the money spent on a per-mile basis, the town of Fountain Hills really comes out on average. When you even compare to agencies like Paradise Valley and Scottsdale and Peoria, the dollars spent per mile maintaining the road network is very similar. Comes out in about the range of about $12,000 per mile at that $2 million annually. The big difference is the shape of your condition distribution. Peoria, Scottsdale, Paradise Valley have the luxury of a network average condition in the 70s and almost no backlog. So, the tail is very shallow. So, they don't have a whole lot of expensive work that they have to lean on. Their average rehab is a lightweight, very cost-effective rehab. You folks aren't in that same boat. Your average rehab that you have to rely on is very costly, which is why it costs you more to maintain your network now is because of that distribution profile. If we look at it from a backlog perspective, very same graph, you have annual budget over the next 10 years on the x-axis, and you have the post-rehab backlog percentage on the y-axis. So, now, we get to see what happens to backlog over time at the current funding rate. And we can see, at the $2 million annually, backlog is going to skyrocket on us to 42%, meaning almost half of the network will be in a backlog category after the 10 years at the current funding rate. So, we know the existing budget is not enough to maintain existing network average PCI, and it's certainly not enough to maintain or arrest the growth at a very minimum in backlog as well. So, some simple analysis findings that we found with this first run is we would certainly, at a very minimum, want to maintain PCI at or above an average of 63 and keep backlog, in an ideal world, below that 15% maximum recommended mark. The town's current planned budget of $2 million, we've already talked about this, is going to result in an average PCI of 52 in 10 years and backlog increase of 42%. Couple other findings, use of a full suite of rehab strategies that are reviewed on an annual basis need to be updated within the pavement management program because material costs and labor costs can fluctuate rather rapidly, and that has a large impact on us from a pavement management perspective. The dollars today may not be enough to maintain our ground tomorrow, and that's directly related to the rates associated with the rehab. We know steady effective rehab and maintenance will save the town far more money over deferred maintenance in the long run. And lastly, the town should resurvey their streets every few years, about every three to five years, to update the condition data and the models within the pavement management system. Now, how do we establish level of service goals? So, what I've attempted to do here is grab a few examples of streets just to show you what PCI range they're in and what letter grade they get. So, you can see, this particular street scores in the PCI range of a 50 and a 60. It scores a letter grade of a C. The next one scores between a 60 and a 70. So, you can see we're getting progressively better here. It scores a letter grade of a B. And lastly, these are the roads that score between a 70 and an 85. They score a letter grade of an A. There's very few distresses, very minor distresses on those particular routes. So, the next steps in the pavement management program. The next steps are to regroup in December to review the recommended pavement management program that's based on councils' established level of service goals. So, that's one thing we want to talk about tonight, is what is that level of service goal? Where do we want to be in terms of network average conditions? Knowing that, we want to develop a full 10-year rehab plan that meets those goals, not only at the network level, but potentially at the arterial, collector, and local roadway level as well. We want to review the budget models associated with all of those level of service goals. We want to examine the rehab activity unit rates and the pavement deterioration curves. We want to examine the rehab activity unit rates and the pavement deterioration curves that are programmed into the pavement management system. As you acquire more data from a pavement management perspective, it gives us the ability to fine-tune the, the pavement deterioration curves within the system. So we can really start honing in the, 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 the rate of deterioration or the forecast, the forecasted aging as well. And then lastly, depending on what those budget models tell us, we may need to explore additional funding options associated with that as well. And with that, I know that was rapid fire and a lot of information, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So what you're telling us is we're average right now, but with our current budgeted numbers, we're going to slide downhill. Is that in sum?
Right, yes.
So has anyone taken the minimum recommended targets, if I'm understanding this correctly, for arterials, collectors, and locals and run the numbers to let us know what the budget should be or what the numbers should be?
So we have not run that particular model. We can. So that's a model that we could, that we could run and bring back to you in December if those minimum goals or minimum targets are the goal and one of the models that we can run. Now, to be clear, we can run multiple models. You don't have to make one decision, but we could run several models to show you different outcomes and different price tags associated with those as well.
So it's a good question, Vice Mayor, because that's the whole point. We're going to do that in December and I think what we're trying to do tonight is determine what that level of service is. We're going to be meeting with a consultant probably in November at a staff level and we'll see what the numbers come back and we'll probably have them come back with some other alternatives for you guys to discover, or I mean, discuss. The other thing that it's very clear, and this came to me like back when we were looking at funding levels for other city services, including streets, a couple of years ago, it was very obvious to me, $2 million is just not enough to do the streets. And especially when you have expensive fog seal treatments for Saguaro that we're starting to get into where we need to do that, as well as to parts of Shea. In order to maintain these assets that we have, I think I understood that to be about a half million to $750,000 just to do that. Well, you spend only 200,000, $2 million a year. That's just taking a big buyout of that budget that you have. So to me, it's very obvious that we're going to have to also look at some other funding mechanisms, including the possibility of probably bonding. So we're going to have to run these numbers, we're going to come back to you, but tonight, what we're really after is to determine, and I know it's a chicken and the egg thing, so your, your point's very well taken, but it wouldn't have made a lot of sense for us to kind of run those numbers because there's a lot of work involved in that. So what we're going to try to do is try to ask you folks to give us some policy direction. We also have our own recommendations, which we'll share with you and then we can come back in December with that, as well as cost impacts and then maybe how the funding gap is going to be met.
Thank you. Councilman Sharno?
Thank you, Mayor. With our average score of 63 on the whole network, it seems with, you know, 30% of the streets in the marginal category, intuitively, it seems like our average should be lower. Was that being skewed by some of the newer streets, like Saguaro Boulevard that we just, you know, did a few years ago and a lot of, a lot of Shea was redone? I'm just wondering if it was being skewed by, you know, Palisades is in fairly decent shape, but you know, some of the bigger streets?
Right, and that's a great question. So the thing to remember with an average number, it's a little distorted because it is an average. So I want, I just want to pull up, pull up this graph here to illustrate what average means. So with this particular graph, this represents your PCI distribution, okay? You could maintain an average of a 63 by pushing half of that graph to the left and the other half to the right and you'd have this big trough in the middle. You could effectively do that and still maintain that 63. So it's a little, it's a little distorted. You are right, it seems like it should be worse, but it's just, there's a number of roads that score between a 60 and a 100 that have elevated it a little bit more.
I mean, I, you know, it's just been some citizens have argued that, oh, it's, you know, 63, that's pretty good. I mean, we don't need to spend a lot, but I mean, clearly 30% are going to drop in the backlog real quick, is what you're saying.
Right, yes.
And so, so, yeah, so, so I think it's more of a steeper slope that we're looking at here than what some people think. And then, and then does the same apply to the national average, too? It just seems, you know, factoring in east coast, Midwest streets and the weather and stuff, I would think those streets are a lot worse than on the, you know, west coast type thing. So is, is there any explanation there in terms of?
So traditionally, road networks are a little worse on the east coast. That's a blanket statement, so there. But what you're dealing with is, is older, more established cities with older infrastructure as well and that plays, that plays a big part of it. So that average 60, 65, that is literally just an average number of agencies that we work with, all the way from California over to Georgia and then up to the northeast as well, very, very average. Now, when we look at other agencies in town, like if you look at Paradise Valley, everybody likes to look at Paradise Valley, their network average PCI score is a 71, if I remember correctly. It's, it's low 70s. It's, 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 it's a great score. But more importantly, their tail off to this left-hand side of that graph is very shallow. They have minuscule, almost no backlog to be had. So the majority of their network ends up falling in a lightweight surface treatment type category, which is why they can, they can, they can, they can use less funds on their particular network to maintain the road network.
Can you also describe the failure of our streets and the deterioration here in the desert and what we face with our heat and the sun and, you know, monsoon and stuff versus, you know, because during the property tax debate, you know, it's a lot of, you know, not picking on New Jersey, but people, oh, you know, our streets are great compared to the potholes and everything back east and it just, it's, you know, there's a different process out here that occurs when you, when we have 5% in backlog, you know, and people look at those streets, well, they're still drivable, but can you get into that a little bit?
Sure, yeah, you betcha. So in terms of roadway deterioration, it varies depending on where you are in geography and what types of weather you end up dealing with. So our clients in South Dakota, in Illinois, in New Hampshire, their rate of deterioration is far steeper. They go through more freeze thaws, which results in more potholes and more, and more heaving in terms of the soils. So their, their, their road conditions can dramatically change after one winter. We just saw that with our client in Sioux Falls. One, one really bad winter and they have pop, potholes and heaving everywhere. Now, in the southwest, we don't particularly have those issues that we have to deal with on a daily basis. We have a whole different issue called oxidation. And literally, our streets suffer, this is going to sound funny, but our streets suffer from a sunburn. They oxidize rather rapidly, which quite frankly, is bad for roads. That, that, the, the roads become brittle and they can crack easier. So our biggest, our biggest influence on an average scale in the southwest is that we have to preserve the fabric of our network. We have to waterproof roads. We have to add oils or mixture back to our roadways as well. So a little bit of a different animal, but it also means that roads in the southwest have a shallower rate of deterioration as well. We can get a little bit more life out of our roads than say a client of ours in New Hampshire.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Justin and Grady, I've been asking for a 10-year plan now for, not quite 10 years. And, and I appreciate it and it was very thorough and I truly appreciate the information you've brought to the table. I don't know that I'll be able to give you very much direction short of until we know what, what we're actually looking at financially. You know, until we see that number, we can't talk about bonds or we can't talk about...
No, absolutely. In fact, that's what we're going to show you in December is we're going to show you what the cost is going to be and show you the gap over the next 10 years, what $2 million is going to get you and what we're going to basically need to make up for that additional. So we're not going to get into that tonight, but we're going to just, basically, we need you to help us establish what we think are the standards. And we've got some recommendations if you want to hear what they are.
Absolutely, please.
So Justin, do you want to go up and share? We have some specific...
Excuse me, Mr. Thompson, just before you go, when you, when you do come back with the report and, and depending on what we say, it's kind of regardless of that, the 40 to 50 marginal, the 30% there, now there, that has some range in there, doesn't it? I mean, are there salvageable roads in there? Are there some roads in there that will need to be totally redone? Because that's a, that's actually the bulk of our problem here.
Right.
So that, does the report take that into consideration or do you kind of look at it as a unit?
It sure does. And what it'll do is it'll, it'll look at that over the 10-year horizon. So what the pavement management analysis is going to do is it's going to, it's going to, it's going to attempt to define the salvageable, what we'll call, what we'll call critical thick overlay candidates that fall within that 40 to 50 zone. Critical roads are roads that are on the cusp of falling into backlog. Meaning if we can salvage them and apply the principles of triage now, we can save exponentially moving forward. So it's really going to tackle and apply that triage principle to those critical roads that are closer to that 40 mark, that are getting ready to fall into backlog. Those that are at a 49, I suspect we simply won't have enough funds to do anything to those and we can buy time by deferring some maintenance on some of those roads. Those are the hard decisions that we have to make from a pavement management, from a financial perspective as well.
One of the things, would there be any sort of a conclusion that would get us to a point where we would have a maintenance count? So say we're, we're, you know, I think we're all probably going to agree that we need to prevent the roads from going, the tipping point of the roads that are going to be unmanageable. So if that means some kind of combination of funding, but, but will you be able to show us at a point where we may get to that sweet spot or whatever, where our maintenance might be able to handle most of what we need to do, like Paradise Valley, for example?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we're going to do when we run the models is we're going to run a few control points. We call them control points and that, that relates back to that maximum recommended mark I mentioned for backlog. We're going to run a model that ends up saying what funding is required annually to maintain or arrest the growth of backlog at that 15% mark. We're going to run it at 10% as well, so we can determine what level of funding is required to maintain backlog in that mode. There's two types of, of agencies that we deal with, PCI-controlled and backlog-controlled. Okay, Paradise Valley has the luxury of being PCI-controlled. Their, their, their concern is that network average PCI because they don't have any backlog. They don't have a whole lot of it. You folks are in a backlog-controlled perspective. We have to control and arrest the growth in that backlog, otherwise it's going to grow exponentially on us and it's going to cost someone someday a lot to reconstruct those roads at the end of the day as well.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. In, in our community, in our town, we have a lot of HOAs and many of these HOAs have the maintenance expenses associated with their HOAs for their roads. Thinking of the future and asking for bonds per se, if, if those communities are already maintaining their roads and they have to vote for funds for the community, I think it's hard to convince them that it's in their best interest to vote and it's the same thing that happened with the sales tax. So, the property tax, rather. So I think you're asking for our opinions and that's what you asked for originally?
Not, not tonight, no.
Consensus, you wanted consensus of what we thought would be the, what our thoughts were.
The grades, the grades, the, a letter grade on...
So here's what I have to say. The downtown district should be top-notch. I think it should be the best roads in our community. It's what visitors see, it's what businesses that want to potentially invest in our town see. The, the Palisades, Saguaro, Fountain Hills Boulevards, they should be pristine. We've already done the bond for Saguaro, that bond's going to be paid off next year and that's what we should be focused on is a showpiece for our community. As we, as we go out from the downtown, I think that that's where you, you, you move into the average and that's where the, the far outskirts, that's where you, you, you have the roads that probably are in the worst condition, so to say, so to speak. And that's not going to be in those HOAs because they already maintain their roads for, predominantly maintain their road. Drive-through Fire Rock, it's, it's beautiful. Flurry sealed, it's pristine. Eagle Mountain, Sunridge Canyon, I believe, also has a, a maintenance for their, their roads and their beautification of their, their HOAs. So I think if we focus on the downtown, if we focus on the roads that come into our community, the main arteries, and we continue to promote our community for investment, then maybe we increase that sales tax revenues by the fact that people want to come to our community and visit a beautiful community and it's one of the best beautiful communities in the valley. And, and we start to generate some buzz, you start to generate this engine of economic vitality of the way we're currently structured. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Let's hear what, what your recommendations are as far as the...
Sure, and if I could just dovetail on that, too, Mayor. Just as far as what I was hearing, though, I, I think what I was hearing is arterials in the downtown are the highest priority. And if you hear what we're going to propose, a higher, highest priority because they carry the most volume, you know, the arterials will be the highest priority as it's been in the past, but I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to...
Okay, Justin, before you start, I want to say that the, to me, because I'm not an expert in any way, my priority is to prevent roads from going over the tipping point. Not to say there wouldn't be flexibility to look at the downtown or other things like that, but just overall saying arterials and, you know, I don't, I don't know that we're picking and choosing based on anything solid. I, I want that information to come from people in the know who know how we can prevent a 42 or a 50% backlog.
Understood.
I'm sorry, real quick, so the downtown streets, like the Avenue, Parkview, Verde River, so forth, are those collectors, then? Or are they, they're not arterials?
They're collectors.
Right, so in their middle...
And I actually just wanted to let you know, those are scheduled to be done this year.
This year?
This year.
Right, because we already decided that.
Are we ready to proceed? We've had numerous discussions for a considerable amount of time. The recommendation from myself and the town manager is that we maintain a B-level of 60 to 70% for all of our arterials. We believe that is reasonable and attainable. The reason for that is a good percentage of our arterial roads have most recently been repaved or reconstructed as a whole and we have a minimal amount of backlog on a couple of them, which would be some portions of Palisades and some portions of Fountain Hills Boulevard. Saguaro and Shea are basically new at this time. We strongly recommend that as the level of service for the arterials, keeping in mind there is some backlog in there. We also strongly recommend for the collectors and the local streets that we maintain a PCI of 50 to 60, which is a C. A large percentage of our backlog is going to be on what we refer to as minor collectors, but they are collectors, and our local roads. As the gentleman behind you expressed, we have an average that's this high. In my opinion, and this is not shared widely, but some people agree, that percentage of PCI in the very good range is misleading because over the last several years under the direction from the mayor and council, town manager, we have focused on saving what we can save, not paying attention to the backlog. And these areas are long, wide strips of pavement and when you combine all that together, you get a higher PCI rating overall. But keep in mind that we still have collectors, minor collectors, and local streets that are in poor to very poor condition. And all of that requires some money and the process to arrive at how we're going to secure that funding. Again, our recommendations for all of our arterials, reasonable and attainable. Grade letter B for all of our collectors and our residentials. We believe that a C is reasonable and somewhat attainable on the majority of what we can save, but it may not include some of the backlog in the long run until we establish the funding criterias.
And if I may, just to add on, that, that doesn't mean the ones that are currently As, we let them drop down to Bs. It just means that it's going to be averaged out to a B or better, is really what we're saying. And same thing on the, on the collectors and the local streets, they'll be C or better.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you. And once again, thank you for your presentation. But until I see some numbers as to what it's going to cost us to get from where we're at to where you guys would like to be, it's hard for me to make a decision.
it's hard for me to make a decision. I mean, I like the program. I think the program makes all the sense in the world, but I still need to see some numbers, and I guess those will be here in December.
Right.
Okay.
Councilman Charno?
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of a general question, I don't know if you can lump them all together, but the 30% of our streets that are marginal, getting ready to tip over into backlog within the next few years, so is the majority of the work to save those, bring them up to 50 or 60, is that going to be milling overlay?
So that portion of the backlog, as it continues to fall off, and I want to remind and share this with everybody, that is subject to change if we have a very wet year because we have a lot of cracking and distress. So there's a possibility that our backlog or our rate of deterioration could increase substantially for some of those areas. Now on to the answer to your question. The majority of that will require a full-depth milling overlay. In some cases, and we are currently working doing some core samples around the local area that are on our list for this year to determine how thick our base is, how thick our asphalt is, because we have some misleading information based on what we thought it was when it was constructed years and years ago and what we now know. So we're doing some core samples. But yes, the majority of them will be brought up to a letter B almost immediately, and in some cases even into an A with the type of treatment we are applying. And the level of deterioration, of course, at that time, depending on the type of treatment that we do to the subbase, will most likely maintain that for a longer period of time since the mixed designs and standards for today's pavement have changed substantially to when most of those were put down in the 70s.
I understand the philosophy and the idea behind, you know, having the arterials at a higher rate and even the collectors in terms of the PCI number, the grade that we assign them. It's just sometimes the local streets, I'm a little biased only because I think of my little street. It's a hammerhead, so there's only five driveways on our street. And when I built my house, you know, I deliberately picked that street. It was a dirt street at the time in 1990. And then, you know, town passed its first bond and, you know, it got paved. But, you know, my children were raised on that street and, you know, as far as bicycles and skateboards and all that kind of thing. So if there's major cracking going on in some of the local streets, you know, streets are used more than just by vehicles, you know, and pedestrians, that type of thing. Several years ago, when I was at the paper still, I got on this weird kick and actually rode my bicycle to work for, in the hot summer months too. And this was before Saguaro was done, but, you know, taking Saguaro Boulevard on a bicycle was worse than a motorcycle, Justin, because the cracks are really wide and those tires are only, you know. So I just, you know, I know we're obviously going to be constrained by budget numbers and that, but just to me, streets are more than just cars and trucks, you know, just a thought.
And we understand that, Councilmember. We receive a number of calls and emails on a regular basis related to the larger-than-average longitudinal cracks that appear in some of our relatively new pavement. A good example of that is La Montana, heading east of Saguaro, climbing the hill. There are some unusual cracks in there that we've worked with. We had some of those on Palisades coming downhill, eastbound, approaching Golden Eagle, that we tried three different types of treatment with several years ago to determine which one was best for that type of cracking. So we have a pretty good idea of what we can do and where we can do it.
Any other discussion? So what they're talking about, a C, a C, and a B, right? Do you want them to work those numbers up then, and is that sort of the consensus? Or is there any objection?
And let me just tell you, I think that those are very conservative. I mean, we're not talking about having the best of, you know, streets in the entire valley. We're thinking that these are manageable streets that will probably be able to maintain after they're maintained at that level, after they're invested. So just wanted to kind of get your input. We're going to be looking, and the consultants can be modeling this and others. And if it comes back, like it's just really crazy expensive, we'll obviously look at other options. But I think we're going to have to at least figure out what this is because as part of a 10-year plan, we're going to have to figure out what the investment's going to take in order to keep up our streets, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin. If there's nothing else, we can move to adjournment. I got a second. Did I get a motion? All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. Good night, everyone.